Yeah.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan.
Yeah.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy.
Yeah.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Present.
Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey.
Yeah.
And Counselor Zachem.
Yeah.
Mr. President, we have a...
I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is in attendance. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like to introduce Counselor Charles Yancey, who will introduce Minister Don Mohammed from Mosque Number 11, who will deliver today's invocation. Counselor Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And again, congratulations on your election. I ask all of our colleagues and guests to rise at this time. It's my distinct honor and privilege to introduce to you Minister Don Mohammed, who is well-known throughout the city of Boston, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the United States of America, and he's known around the world as well. But he's our Minister Don. Grandfather of 27, father of five, married for more than 60 years, give us all something to aspire to. But just as importantly, Minister Don has been fighting for human rights and justice in our great city for many, many years. He was a close associate, of course, of Louis Farakhan and Elijah Mohammed. But one of the reasons I asked him to join us this afternoon is today is a very special day, not just because it's a day after Michelle Wu's birthday, but because today, of course, with him, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, January 15. And Minister Don did have the honor of spending a great deal of time with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And not only that, as I was mentioning to him earlier, when Nelson Mandela came in town, it was Minister Don onstage with him on June 23, 1990, at Madison Park. So without any further ado, without going through his very lengthy biography, that would take another half hour, I'm going to introduce to you a man of great conviction and compassion and understanding, Minister Don Mohammed of Mohammed's Mosque Number 11, right in the heart of District 4 and Grove Hall. Minister Don.
Well, first of all, I thank all of you for being here, and especially God. I wouldn't want to be in any place other than this at this time. And it is because of the slogan that we have out there now, "Boston Strong." And you have the power to make Boston strong. I hope and pray that the odd number 13 makes a decision in the best interest of the weakest people. There's an old saying, "You strengthen a chain by strengthening the weakest link." And the little material that we have here talks about three things that need to be looked at: drugs, crime. Because whenever someone is killed, there are two sides. Person's family who got killed, the killer, and they go off to prison. We don't need any more prisons. We need to strengthen the weakest link. And this august body that is here, much of it is in your hands. So I ask you, consider the weakest link when you make decisions concerning Boston. And then we can have peace in the streets. We can have our children get an education. They won't have to sell drugs. They won't have to buy guns. It is so much power here in City Hall. And I say, as a rapper, you all should grab it all. Let us bow our heads. Almighty God, Creator of the heavens and the earth, the Finder and the Life-Giver, to all of your creatures, as these men and women here at City Hall in Boston. There is a slogan now, "Boston Strong." Let us make this city the strongest in the country. After all, God, we know that the sun rises in Boston 11 seconds before it gets to New York. Let us take the opportunity that is upon us. Those people who fought for this city, who fought to make this nation what it ought to be. Let us come together, black and white. Those are not issues, it's whether you're wrong or whether you're right. Anyone who is thinking as a wardrobe at home, that all of their suits are not of one color, that's what the army is about. But those of us who are here today, you have the power to improve school systems. You have the power to improve those systems that tear men and women apart. And if we take the opportunity to pull this chain together at the same time in the same direction, then Boston can be a shining light for the entire country and the world. All of these things we ask, we ask this through the name Jesus that some people believe in. I do too. I call God Allah. Some call Him Mizdech and all other names. But there is only one creature, and that is God Himself. And if we will take love and bind it together, we'll be able to strengthen the weakest link. From the City Council in the city of Boston, and the greatest city that I know, I would not want to live any other place than this. I ask these things of you, in the name of all of your messengers, from Abraham to Mohammed and Jesus, ask for the nations that He has given a God and light for us. Let us now say, "Amen."
Thank you, Minister Don Mohammed. Thank you for your inspiring message. At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor Yancey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask my colleagues to give me a little leeway here, my first time as the head of this august body, and I appreciate it. I'd like to, as Counselor Yancey has indicated, today's a special day. It's a special day here in Boston, as well as across the United States of America, celebrating the birth date of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who I think would have been 85 years old today. Counselor Yancey will introduce a presentation.
Thank you very much, President Linehan, for allowing me to invite a member of my staff, an intern, who actually shared a podium with President Obama when he was the, I think, valedictorian of his class at Morehouse just last year. He, like so many other talented young people in the city of Boston, many of you are now city councilors, was not born when Dr. King lost his life, but certainly was inspired by Dr. King's sacrifice. So you'll do me a great honor by paying close attention to Sagan Iduwu, who has graciously agreed to recite one of Dr. King's many, many speeches, but I believe by far the one that he's most known for. Sagan Iduwu.
I am happy to join with you today in what will go down in history as the greatest demonstration for freedom in the history of our nation. Five score years ago, a great American in whose symbolic shadow we stand today signed the Emancipation Proclamation. This momentous decree came as a great beacon light of hope to millions of Negro slaves who had been seared in the flames of withering injustice. It came as a joyous daybreak to end the long night of their captivity. But 100 years later, the Negro still is not free. 100 years later, the life of the Negro is still sadly crippled by the manacles of segregation and the chains of discrimination. 100 years later, the Negro lives on a lonely island of poverty in the midst of a vast ocean of material prosperity. 100 years later, the Negro is still languished in the corners of American society and finds himself in exile in his own land. And so we've come here today to dramatize a shameful condition. In a sense, we've come to our nation's capital to cash a check. When the architects of our republic wrote the magnificent words of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, they were signing a promissory note to which every American was to fall heir. This note was a promise that all men, yes, black men as well as white men, would be guaranteed the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is obvious today that America has defaulted on this promissory note insofar as her citizens of color are concerned. Instead of honoring this sacred obligation, America has given the Negro people a bad check, a check which has come back marked insufficient funds. But we refuse to believe that the banks of justice are bankrupt. We refuse to believe that there are insufficient funds in the great vaults of opportunity of this nation. And so we've come to cash this check, a check that will give us upon demand the riches of freedom and the security of justice. We have also come to this hallowed spot to remind America of the fierce urgency of now. This is no time to engage in the luxury of cooling off or to take the tranquilizing drug of gradualism. Now is the time to make real the promises of democracy. Now is the time to rise from the dark and desolate valley of segregation to the sunlit path of racial justice. Now is the time to lift our nation from the quick sands of racial injustice to the solid rock of brotherhood. Now is the time to make justice a reality for all of God's children. It would be fatal for the nation to overlook the urgency of the moment. This sweltering summer of the Negro's legitimate discontent will not pass until there is an invigorating autumn of freedom and equality. 1963 is not an end, but a beginning. And those who hoped that the Negro needed to blow off steam and will now be content will have a rude awakening if the nation returns to business as usual. There will be neither rest nor tranquility in America until the Negro is granted his citizenship rights. The whirlwinds of revolt will continue to shake the foundations of our nation until the bright day of justice emerges. But there is something that I must say to my people who stand on the warm threshold which leads into the Palace of Justice. In the process of gaining our rightful place, we must not be guilty of wrongful deeds. Let us not seek to satisfy our thirst for freedom by drinking from the cup of bitterness and hatred. We must not allow our creative protest to degenerate into physical violence again and again. We must rise to the majestic heights of meeting physical force with soul force. The marvelous new militancy which has engulfed the Negro community must not lead us to a distrust of all white people. Many of our white brothers, as evidenced by their presence here today, have come to realize that their destiny is tied up with our destiny. They've come to realize that their freedom is inextricably bound to our freedom. We cannot walk alone. And as we walk, we must make the pledge that we shall always march ahead. We cannot turn back. There are those who are asking, the devotees of civil rights, "When will you be satisfied?" We can never be satisfied as long as the Negro was the victim of the unspeakable horrors of police brutality. We can never be satisfied as long as our bodies, heavy with the fatigue of travel, cannot gain lodging in the motels of the highways and the hotels of the cities. We cannot be satisfied as long as a Negro in Mississippi cannot vote and a Negro in New York believes he has nothing for which to vote. No, no, we are not satisfied, and we will not be satisfied until justice rolls down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. Go back to Mississippi. Go back to Alabama. Go back to South Carolina. Go back to Georgia. Go back to Louisiana. Go back to the slums and ghettos of our northern cities, knowing that somehow this situation can and will be changed. Let us not wallow in the valley of despair. I say to you today, my friends, and so even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day on the red hills of Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. I have a dream that one day even the state of Mississippi, a state sweltering with the heat of injustice, sweltering with the heat of oppression, will be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day, down in Alabama, with its vicious racists, with its governor having his lips dripping with the words of interposition and nullification, one day right there in Alabama, little black boys and black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and white girls as sisters and brothers. I have a dream today. I have a dream that one day every valley shall be exalted. Every hill and mountain shall be made low. The rough places will be made plain, and the crooked places will be made straight. And the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all flesh shall see it together. This is our hope. This is the faith that I go back to the South with. With this faith, we will be able to hear out of the mountain of despair a stone of hope. With this faith, we will be able to transform the jangle and discords of our nation into a beautiful symphony of brotherhood. With this faith, we will be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to go to jail together, to stand up for freedom together, knowing that we will be free one day. And this will be the day when all of God's children will be able to sing with new meaning, "My country, 'tis of thee, sweet land of liberty of thee, I sing; land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims' pride; from every mountainside, let freedom ring." And if America is to be a great nation, this must become true. And so let freedom ring from the prodigious hilltops of New Hampshire. Let freedom ring from the mighty mountains of New York. Let freedom ring from the snow-capped Rockies of Colorado. Let freedom ring from the heightening Alleghanies of Pennsylvania. Let freedom ring from the curvaceous slopes of California. But not only that, let freedom ring from Stone Mountain of Georgia. Let freedom ring from Lookout Mountain of Tennessee. Let freedom ring from every hill and mole hill of Mississippi, from every mountainside. Let freedom ring. And when this happens, when we allow freedom ring, when we let it ring from every village and every hamlet, from every state and every city, we will be able to speed up that day when all of God's children, black men and white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestant and Catholic, will be able to join hands and sing in the words of the oath Negro spiritual, "Free at last, free at last, thank God almighty, we are free at last."
And I'd like to thank Counselor Yancey for that presentation and for that important and inspiring speech. We don't hear oratory. We don't hear content like that today in our public realm. And so it's good for us all to be reminded of how important it was and, of course, how important Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was. Thank you. All the councils come up? We take a photo? Stand right in the middle.
Thanks.
This is the first of many, gents and ladies.
Is Nicole?
Taking your pictures.
She takes the official one for Yancey, too.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. President, for...
You're welcome. Thank you. That was amazing. Madam Clerk, approval of the minutes? If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes stand approved. Hearing no objections, the minutes stand approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0132, message and order authorizing the city pursuant to Section 70 of Chapter 44 of Mass. General Laws to accept and expand, upon receipt, revenue generated by the city's hubway system for the purpose of further supporting and expanding the system.
Docket number 0132 will be placed in the committee of the whole.
Docket number 0133, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for and accept federal FY13 Continuum of Care grant funds of $25 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to support programs that provide services and housing to the homeless.
Docket number 133 will be placed in the committee of the whole.
Docket number 0134, message and order authorizing the Commissioner of the Parks and Recreation Department to accept and expand a capital grant of $400,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for Communities, PARC, program for the improvement of LaPresti Park located in the neighborhood of East Boston.
Docket 0134 will be placed in the committee of the whole.
Docket number 0135, message and order authorizing the mayor's office of New Bostonians to accept and expand a grant of $200,000 from contributions received from individuals, organizations...
Docket 0135 will be placed in the committee of the whole.
Docket number 0136, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an FY13 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, Fair Housing Assistance Program, grant funds awarded to the Boston Fair Housing Commission for the purpose of conducting investigations, educating the public, engaging in activities that reduce impediments to housing choices, and as payment for the BFHC/CS FY13 investigatory work pursuant to the BFHC/HUD Fair Housing Assistance Partnership, known as FHAP, agreement, all for a total amount of $107,924.
Docket 0136 will be placed in the committee of the whole.
Docket number 0137, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $5,412 from the FY13 National Institute of Justice, known as NIJ, Social Sciences Research and Forensic Science, passed through the University of Illinois-Champaign for the purpose to support analysis, data collection, and reporting by the Boston Police Department's Crime and Lab Office of Research and Development.
Counselor Murphy moves suspension and pass of docket 0137. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Docket 0137 has passed.
Mr. President, would you like me to read all of the...
Yeah, please. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Reports of public offices and others.
Docket number 0138, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Galvin, Commissioner of Property Management, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 10139, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Justin Holmes as the Acting Director of Management Information Systems, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0140, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Antonia Pollak as Acting Commissioner of Parks, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0141, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of William Sennett as Acting Corporation Counsel, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0142, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Paul Curran as Supervisor of Labor Relations, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0143, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Shari Davis as Executive Director of the Youth Fund, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0144, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Felix Arroyo as Chief of Health and Human Services, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0145, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Christopher Biner as Acting Executive Director of Boston Centers for Youth and Families, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0146, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Karen Quaner as Supervisor of Budgets, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0147, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Christopher Cook as Director of the Office of Arts, Tourism, and Special Events, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0148, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Geraldine Cadyer as Election Commissioner, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0149, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Dennehy as Acting Commissioner of Public Works, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0150, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Sheila Dillon as Chief of Housing and Neighborhood Development, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0151, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of William Evans as Acting Police Commissioner, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0152, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Barry Fadden as Acting Purchase Agent, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0153, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of James Galouli as Acting Commissioner of Transportation, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0152, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of James Galouli as Acting Commissioner of Transportation, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0154, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Nancy Gerard as Commissioner of Environment, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0155, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Brian Glasscock as Commissioner of Inspection Services, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0156, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of James Sullivan as Acting Director of Chief of Advocacy and Strategic Investment and Director of Intergovernmental Relations, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0157, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Sally Glora as City Auditor, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0158, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of John Hassan as the Acting Fire Commissioner of the Boston Fire Department, effective January 6, 2014, for a period not to exceed 60 days. Docket number 0159, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Dion Irish as Director of the Office of Civil Rights, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0160, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Vivian Leonard as Supervisor of Personnel, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0161, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Patricia Malone as Director of Consumer Affairs and Licensing, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0162, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Kristin McCosh as Director of the Commission of Persons with Disabilities, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0163, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Patricia McMahon as City Registrar, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0164, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ronald Rackhow as Commissioner of Assessing, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0164, notice was received from the mayor... I'm sorry, I just did that. Docket number 0165, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Emily Shea, the Commissioner of Elder Affairs, January 6, 2014. Docket number 0166, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Brian Swett as Chief of Environment and Energy, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0167, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Francisco Urina as Commissioner of Veterans Affairs, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0168, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Meredith Weenick as Collective Treasurer, effective January 6, 2014. Docket number 0169, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of William Evans as Police Commissioner of the Boston Police Department, effective January 9, 2014. Docket number 0170, communication was received from the clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment of the contract between the City of Boston and the Podium Owner Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A, the Massachusetts General Laws. Docket number 0171, communication was received from the clerk of the following by the Redevelopment Authority of the Contract Between the City of Boston and Garage Expansion Owner Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A, the Massachusetts General Law. Docket number 0172, communication was received from the clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Agreement Between the City of Boston and Up and Square Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A, of the Massachusetts General Laws. Docket number 0173, communication was received from the clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Agreement Between the City of Boston and St. Kevin's Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121A, Section 6A, of the Massachusetts General Law. Docket number 0174, communication was received from the clerk of the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the VNS Project, known as The Project, SPRO 121A and lease documents. Docket number 0175, notice was received from the clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at his meeting of December 18, 2013.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket number 0138 through 0175 will be placed on file. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Let me see. Yep, they're all from Counsel Leancey, please.
Docket number 0176, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for hearing regarding racial disparities in Boston. Docket number 0177, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinance, increasing safety of students on bus... on school buses, bus monitors on school buses. Docket number 0178, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinances, increasing safety of students on school buses, seat belts on school buses. Docket number 0179, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for hearing regarding Boston cable television rates. Docket number 0180, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for a loan of $120 million for the planning, designing, acquiring land for and constructing and originally equipping structures and facilities, and for remodeling, reconstructing, or making major alterations, additions, and major repairs to existing facilities, including original equipment and landscaping, including the planting of shade trees, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair for the purpose of the school department, known as the high school in Mattapan. Docket number 0... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Docket number 0181, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for a hearing to discuss homelessness among African-American veterans. Docket number 0182, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinance, amending CBC Chapter 12-13, pay prevent parental leave. Docket number 0183, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for hearing to discuss poverty and unemployment in the city of Boston. Docket number 0814, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinances, CBC, Chapter 6-2.5, elderly property tax exemptions. Docket number 0185, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinance, calling for the mandatory use of GPS technology on all emergency vehicles operating in the city of Boston. Docket number 0186, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for hearing to discuss the state of emergency regarding the HIV/AIDS epidemic in communities of color in Boston. Docket number 0187, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for hearing to discuss resources and services available to individuals with sickle cell disease. Docket number 0188, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for hearing regarding viola transportation labor practices in the city of Boston. Docket number 0189, Counsel Leancey offered the following order for hearing, mandating placement of functioning automated external defibrillators in public buildings in Boston. Docket number 0190, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinance, mandating use of automated external defibrillators in Boston police vehicles responding to 911 calls in the city. Docket number 0191, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinance, CBC, Chapter 11-1.8, requirement to wear bulletproof vests. Docket number 0192, Counsel Leancey offered the following resolutions, supporting the hiring of up to 300 street and youth workers. Docket number 0193, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinance, amending the City of Boston Code, Chapter 4, Minority and Women Business Enterprise. And docket number 0194, Counsel Leancey offered the following ordinance, amending CBC, Chapter 7, testing of soil and city-owned land used for urban farms.
At this time, the chair recognizes Counsel Leancey.
Plus, Mr. President, there are two additional late files. We can take it up later if you like.
Yes, we will.
Okay. I want to go through these very quickly. These are, for the most part, refiles. Those of colleagues who've been here for a while should recognize most of these. And for the newer city councils, I invite your insight, your comments, your contributions, your amendments, so that we can implement many of these items. On the annual basis, I submit at least 50% of my legislative agenda for the year, and this is roughly 50% of what I plan to do this year. So on the items, I'll go fairly quickly. 0176, concern racial disparities in the city of Boston. We have a city that is very diverse. Forty-seven percent of the city is made up of whites, 53% made up of people of color. But yet, after examining the demographic makeup of most city departments, very few, if any, come close to reflecting that reality. So this hearing is a continuation of hearings held in the past to examine that issue. 0177 and 0178, concerns safety of public school buses. There was a third item that passed many years ago that requires all of our buses to have the crossing gate. That was actually passed in 1994. And incidentally, it was one of the few pieces of legislation in the last 20 years that was passed over a mayor veto. No, I'm sorry. That did not have mayor veto, it was the parental school leave ordinance that did. But in essence, a school bus monitor, I believe, is required on our school buses, particularly those who are transporting a significant number of our students. I don't think it's reasonable for us to ask a school bus driver not only to navigate some very difficult and dangerous roads of the city of Boston, but also to monitor upwards of 65 children in a bus. And the monitoring of those children truly is very important, particularly when you consider that any one of them could suffer a health emergency on the bus, there could be a confrontation, which happens once in a while, between students, there could be an accident that the bus is engaged in. And every school day, there is either minor or a major incident involving Boston public school buses. 0178 calls for the installation of seat belts on school buses. Again, this is not a new proposal, but the administration did make a concession many years ago to require each school bus to be seat belt ready but not to require the seat belts to be installed. But I think it's very important for our young children to develop the habit of wearing seat belts. And in many jurisdictions around the country, they do in fact require seat belts on school buses. 0179 concerns cable television rates, particularly for those on fixed incomes. I believe that the rates are too high, that's easy to say, but I also believe that we should hear on a periodic basis from, in this case, Comcast, see what steps are being made to ensure that everyone truly has access to cable in the city of Boston. Another familiar one, 0180, calls for the passage of a loan order to build a new high school on the grounds of the Boston State Hospital. I'm not going to go into tremendous amount of detail on this right now, but I will mention that Michael Contemposas, past superintendent of schools, past chief operating officer for the city of Boston, put in writing that this particular law... for the city of Boston, put in writing that this particular location is ideal for the location of a high school. Now, today, we have roughly 4,000 Boston Public High School students attending buildings that were designed for a different purpose. Many of those do not have basic amenities, if you will, such as a cafeteria, science labs, libraries, and gymnasium. 0181, of course, I'm concerned with the treatment of all veterans of all races, but many advocacy groups have approached me and asked that we focus on the plight of African-American veterans, keeping in mind that African-American soldiers were treated with a great deal of disrespect and racism during World War II. And many of those veterans are still around today, and unfortunately, some remain homeless. 0182, amends the parental school leave ordinance that this body passed in 1994 over the mayor veto. And it simply encourages parents to be more involved in their students' education. Some of you know I came from a relatively large family by some standards, I'm one of nine. And my parents spent a lot of time in each classroom that I attended during my 13 years in the Boston Public School system, from kindergarten, no, I wasn't kept back, from kindergarten to 12th grade. And I believe that one of the reasons that some of our parents cannot participate in the schools as much as they would want to is because of restrictions due to their employment situation. So we have an ordinance on the books right now that says to private employers that you must provide an opportunity for your parents, parents of Boston Public School children, to take time off, give them proper notice to the supervisors, et cetera, but it's unpaid leave. And this particular amendment would allow the city of Boston to grant paid leave to city employees. This ordinance will not require private employers to do so, because I don't believe the city of Boston has the jurisdiction to force payment of parental school leave of private employers. 0183, it's a continuation of a hearing that we began back in December of 2013, looking into the issue of poverty and unemployment in the city of Boston. And we're going to do a follow-on for that particular hearing, because many of our major employers did not participate for one reason or another. 0184, we have provided a great benefit to our senior citizens in the area of property taxes. Senior citizens can receive, I believe it's more than $1,000 now, exemption from their property taxes, but it requires that they refile their application year after year after year. If they forget, and even some of us young folks forget to do things once in a while, if they forget to file that one year, they lose the benefit. This particular ordinance would require the city to devise a system where our senior citizens will receive automatic renewals. Now, there is a reason for the renewals, because it is income-based, but I believe we can develop a system, spot checks or whatever, to ensure that this is being properly implemented. 0185, mandatory use of GPS technology on all emergency vehicles. I filed this initially because one of our EMS vehicles was speeding down Bolden Street, and I was participating in a rally. The driver of that ambulance pulled over and asked me for directions. Now, this was granted a number of years ago. And a thought occurred to me, why are they asking me for directions when they're responding to an emergency call? And at the time, GPS was relatively new, so I suggested that we require GPS on all emergency vehicles, including fire, police, and EMS. Now, fortunately, last year, within the contractual agreement between the Patrolman Association and the city of Boston, they are going to permit GPS on police vehicles, but I want to concretize that agreement in the form of an ordinance that require all of our emergency vehicles to have that technology. 0186, state of emergency legislation was passed by this body many years ago, where there's actually a line item in the Boston Public Health Commission's budget, which focuses on raising the level of awareness in certain communities that have been hit and continue to be hit, particularly hard by HIV and AIDS. This hearing will really provide us with an update in terms of how that system is working. 0187, order for a hearing to discuss resources and services available to individuals with sickle cell disease. We did have a hearing on this last year, however, it was not very well attended, not only by city councils, but by the public. And yet, we have hundreds of our Boston Public School children who are suffering from sickle cell disease. And that has very significant implications, because if the room temperature of a classroom is too low, it can bring on attacks for many of our young people suffering from sickle cell disease. Problem is that many of our educators are not aware of it, many of our other students are not aware of it, and it puts those children suffering from that disease at a severe disadvantage, not to mention the other services that they need because of their disease. 0188 is a continuation of a hearing that began last year, looking at the events of October 8, where our children were not picked up in the morning, where the buses were prevented from leaving in the afternoon. And I think we need to give Viola an opportunity to respond to many of the charges as well. They did not participate in that particular hearing, but hopefully, Viola and the administration will find a way to participate in the follow-up hearing. 0189, in order for automatic electronic defibrillators in public buildings. All of us have learned of many stories, where lives have been saved because we had that device, which is relatively cheap today, available, so if someone is suffering from a cardiac arrest, they can be resuscitated by individuals, even individuals who have not received a great deal of extensive training. A related ordinance would require our school, I mean, our police vehicles to be equipped with these portable automatic electronic defibrillators in events of emergency, where some private or public buildings may not have this device, but if we put them in each of our police vehicles, and all of our police officers are already trained on first aid, including the use of these defibrillators, that we may have the opportunity to save a few lives. 0191, it's an ordinance requiring all of our police officers, when they put their vest on, I mean, when they put their uniform on, to also include a bulletproof vest. Many of you know that it takes about $1 million to replace a police officer killed in line of action. That's not my primary motivation for this legislation, but Dapper O'Neill and I, back in 1987, got an order passed requiring the city to pay for bulletproof vests worn by our police officers. Prior to that time, our officers had to go into their pockets to buy their vests, and those vests today probably cost at least $1,000 apiece. I had a companion order, which didn't pass back then, but I've been fighting for ever since. Now, this is to require our officers to actually wear those vests. 0192 has to do with the hiring of up to 300 street workers and youth workers. We have roughly 100 today, when you combine street and youth workers. But I believe these others are needed, because very often, our street workers are literally motorcycling from one incident to another, robbing them of the opportunity to develop the working relationships, which I believe these mentors really need to do to prevent violence from taking place and to provide resources to the families to create a situation where our young people are not engaged in self-destructive or destructive activities. 0193 is an ordinance amending the MWBE requirements in light of recent court cases, but also with the eye towards ensuring that we level the playing field, that we encourage participation of all businesses, women-owned as well as businesses owned by people of color. In many departments, based on studies I've done, less than 1% of the actual expenditures on these contracts go to businesses owned by women or people of color. 0194 is a follow-up on an ordinance I filed last year, which would require by ordinance that all city-owned land used for the purposes of urban agriculture be tested, the original soil be tested. Now, that was resisted by the prior administration, because they were afraid that the city may encounter greater liability. But I believe it's almost a moral issue that if we're going to use public property to grow food, even if you have a barrier and some imported soil, we are obligated to make sure that it's a clean site. So those, Mr. President, are part of my legislative offering for calendar year 2014.
Thank you, Council Yancey. Councilor Murphy?
Mr. President, I want to add my 0177, 0179, 0180, 0181, 0184, 0185, 0190, and 0194. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Could you repeat that again for the clerk? Or if you have it, you could submit it? If you have it written, could you submit it, or could you repeat it? Okay.
No, Madam Clerk. 0177, 0179, 0180, 0181, 0184, 0185, 0190, and 0194. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Presley?
Sir?
Thank you, Council Presley. Councilor O'Malley?
I wish to add my name to the following dockets. 0177, 0179, 0182, 0183, 0184, and 0186. Thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Councilor Jackson?
I too would also like to thank the author for his extensive work. I would like to add my name to dockets 0176, 0177, 0178, 0179, 0180, 0183, 0186, 0187, 0188, and 0192, in addition, 0193.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Docket number 0176 through 0194 will be placed in the committee of the whole. Our personnel orders.
Following order for the appointment of temporary employee Susan McMorris.
Personnel matter, docket 0194. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it, docket 0195 has passed. Suspended and passed.
Thank you. Docket number 0196, Council Linehan for Council Wu, offer the following order for the appointment of temporary employees.
Councilor will move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0196. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it, docket 0196 has passed.
Docket number 0197, Council Linehan for Councilor Jackson, offer the following order.
Councilor Jackson, move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0197. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it, docket 0197 has passed.
Docket number 0198, Council Linehan for Councilor Jackson, offer the following order.
Councilor Jackson, move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0198. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it, docket 0198 has passed. Madam Clerk, late files, please? I'm informed by the clerk that there are nine late file matters in the hands of the clerk, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. There being no objection, the matters are added to the agenda. The clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
Should I read?
Yeah, first and last, please.
Offered by Councilor Charles Yancey, City of Boston, and the city council, order for hearing regarding monument honoring Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in Boston. Whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia, on January 15, 1929, and this year will be the 84th anniversary of his birth. Be it resolved, I'm sorry, that the Boston City Council meeting assembled does proclaim Wednesday, January 15, 2014, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Day in the city of Boston, and be it further resolved that the city of Boston contributes financial support for the erection of the MLK statue in the vicinity of Boston City Hall in the likeness of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in recognition of King's courageous fight for justice in Boston and throughout the United States of America.
Council Yancey?
Thank you very much. I would like to make a correction amendment on the first, whereas it's actually 85th anniversary of Dr. King's birth. I'd like to correct that for the record. Mr. President, in 1999, the Boston City Council passed a similar order, calling for a memorial of Dr. King to be constructed in the vicinity of Boston City Hall. Since, I believe, Councilor Murphy and I are the only survivors from 1999 who are currently on this body, I believe Councilor Murphy was here, I thought it was appropriate to renew our commitment, particularly on today, on Dr. King's birthday, particularly in light of the tremendous message we received from Sagan Idiwu, who I thought, I closed my eyes for a few moments, and I thought I was listening to Dr. King. So somehow, Dr. King was channeled through this young man who did not exist when Dr. King was assassinated. So I believe, Mr. President, that it would be very valuable for every member, not just the city council, to reflect on Dr. King, but every member of our community known as the city of Boston. There are many people in the city of Boston who gave their lives for the same principles that Dr. King gave his life. And I can't think of any individual who's perhaps more deserving of that type of recognition than Dr. King. Now, it's true, Bill Russell was a great athlete, he was a civil rights fighter in his own right. It's true that we're in a building today that wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Mayor John Collins. So it's altogether appropriate that we have memorials reflecting that about Mayor Collins and Bill Russell right there on City Hall Plaza. But Dr. King also invested quite a bit in the city of Boston. So at this time, I would ask all of our colleagues to sign on to this. In 1999, 12 of the 13 members did sign on, including your predecessor, Mr. President, Jimmy Kelly signed on to this and was enthusiastic about it. So I think as a tribute to Dr. King, all of us should sign on to this particular resolution and work towards this actual implementation, with all due respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Jackson?
I want to thank Counselor Yancey for his years of advocacy around civil rights. I also want to thank Sagan Idewu for voicing the sentiment and literally the words of Dr. King. And I also, too, closed my eyes and heard that sensation and feeling. In 2000, I got to go to London and felt really cool, other than the fact that I was twice as broke because the conversion rate there meant that I had a lot less money than I have here. I got to go to Westminster Abbey. Kid from Roxbury got to walk into Westminster Abbey and walk through places that 1010 AD and all of these tributes to the past. And I got to the end, and there was a statue of Martin Luther King in London that was placed there in 1998. We, as a city and as a country, owe it to Dr. King, his family, and his legacy to step forward and to do the right thing and honors another person who has contributed not only to Boston but the country as a whole by the statue. And I think it's important that we're making the statement on this day, on his birthday. So often, we commemorate people after they're gone and deal with when they passed. We want to deal with the legacy that lives on. So I want to thank Counsel Yancey, and I also want to thank you, Mr. President, for allowing for that speech to be done today. I think it's significant that we do that and we stand together and that the ideals of that speech are carried about in our body. And I want to thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Do you want to sign on?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Counselor Jackson would like to sign on. Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Murphy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zaken, and the chair also, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and Counselor Flaherty. Sorry, I didn't mean to. Could you please read the next late file, Madam Clerk? First and last, if you could.
Thank you. Offered by the Boston, by Boston City Council, Charles C. Yancey, an ordinance regarding the prohibition of research designated as Biosafety Level 4, BSL 4. Whereas Boston University Medical Center has submitted a proposal to the U.S. National Institutes of Health for $1.6 billion in federal funding over the next two decades to build a bioterrorism defense research facility on Albany Street in the south end of the City of Boston. And whereas protection of the health and safety of the residents and visitors of the City of Boston and the surrounding region is more important than the economic development stimulus that could potentially result from the Boston University's receipt of such grant.
Counselor Yancey?
I'll be speaking during this session. And that does not require an applause. Mr. President, this is an issue that has also been with us for many years. There have been a number of court cases. There have been a number of hearings right here in this chambers, in these chambers concerning the issue of the bio lab. But in each of those instances, Mr. President, one clear fact always surfaced. When I asked our public safety officials, are we ready for an incident involving a pathogen for which we have no known cures? The police commissioner, the fire commissioner, and the head of public health have told me, no, we are not. So while I favor research, and I believe that Boston has a wealth of talented individuals to participate in research, I'm also very concerned about what would happen if there were to be a release. And that was around when BU admitted relatedly that there was a release of tularemia in the City of Boston, not as dangerous as Ebola, but a disease that even at that time didn't have a known cure. So then I asked during several of these hearings, what would happen if there was in fact a release at this bio lab? Intuitively, I assumed that the response was going to be that we would have to figure out how to evacuate residents in the immediate vicinity. But I was told by Dr. Barry that if something like that were to happen, Dr. Barry was with the Public Health Commission, I believe she's still there, that we would not be talking about an evacuation, Mr. President. We'll be talking about a militarily enforced quarantine to prevent others from succumbing from whatever release took place. So I think this is still a very important issue. The building has been constructed. I think it's altogether appropriate for research to take place in that building, particularly levels 1 through 3. But I am not as confident, Mr. President, that we should permit the research on the most dangerous pathogens known to humankind because we have no known cure. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. At this time, those two late file matters will be placed in the committee of the whole. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you press the button? Oh, you weren't. Counselor Jackson would like to have his name added to the last late file matter. Counselor Presley would also like to have her name added. Please place those two late file matters in the committee of the whole. Next late file matter?
Communication from Martin J. Walsh, Mayor, to the clerk. Dear Ms. Feeney, in accordance with provisions of Section 5-5.10 of the City of Boston Municipal Code, I hereby appoint Renee Fielding, 37 Saxton Street, Dorchester, Mass. 02125, Director of Emergency Management, effective January 6, 2014. Sincerely, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
Place that matter on file.
Communication from Mayor Martin J. Walsh. Dear Ms. Feeney, in accordance with section, provisions of Section 5-5.10 of the City of Boston Municipal Code, I hereby appoint Keith Williams, 582 Blue Hill Avenue, Boston, Mass. 02121, interim director, interim executive director of the Office of Boston Residents' Jobs Policy and Small and Local Businesses' Enterprise Office, effective January 6, 2014, for a period of 60 days.
Place that on file, please.
Communication from Mayor Martin J. Walsh to city clerk. Dear Ms. Feeney, in accordance with the provisions of Section 5-5.10 of the City of Boston Municipal Code, I hereby appoint John Walsh, 15 Gilmore Terrace, West Roxbury, Mass. 02132, Executive Director of the Office of Neighborhood Services, effective January 6, 2014. Sincerely, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
Place that on file, please, Madam Clerk.
And now I have four.
Okay.
Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor Zaken ordered that effective Saturday, January 18.
This matter's personnel in nature. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. The rules have been suspended and the matter has passed.
Counselor Bill.
I'm moving for suspension.
Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor Wu ordered that effective Wednesday, January 15, the following name person.
It's personnel in nature, move suspension, Counselor Wu, move suspension of the rules in passage of the matter. All those in favor? All those opposed? No. The ayes have it. The matter is passed.
Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor Zaken ordered that effective Saturday, January 15.
Counselor Zaken moved suspension of the rules in passage of the matter. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it and the matter has passed.
Counselor Bill Linnahan for Counselor Zaken ordered that effective Saturday, January 11, 2014, the following name person be hereby.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. For Counselor.
Counselor Zaken.
For Counselor Zaken, move suspension of the rules in passage of the matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the matter's been passed. Now, we have three additions to the consent agenda. Okay. There are five late file matters which in absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. And the chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. Yep. At this time, Counselor Murphy? Proceed.
I and everybody else awoke to the news that Robert H. Quinn, Bob Quinn, who'd been a longtime friend of mine and has worked with every one of us on the City Council over the course of the last several years, passed away at his house down the Cape. He was 85 years old. And just want to make a brief statement about him. He was a role model for those of us in public service, the way he carried himself over the course of the years. But more importantly, he was a role model in life. He was somebody, the way he lived his life, he was devoted to his wife, his family, his church, his beloved neighborhood of Savin Hill. All things began and ended in Savin Hill with Bob Quinn. He served several years in the legislature. He climbed to the powerful role of Speaker of the House of Representatives. He also served statewide as the elected Attorney General of the Commonwealth. And all of us who serve in public life have the title, and here we have the title counselor. And after we retire from here, we keep the title. At least we do out on the streets. People see you and they say, oh, Representative, or old counselor. And with Bob Quinn, it was always Mr. Speaker or General. And I was always wondered why he agreed to be, you know, saluted with both. And at one point in time, I asked him, I said, Mr. Quinn, people call you General and they call you Mr. Speaker. Which do you prefer? And this says about all there is to say about Bob Quinn. He said, I prefer the title Mr. Speaker because that was the role in which I helped people. And that's what we're in this business to do. Bottom line, strip it all away, is to help people. As Attorney General, my interactions with people were not so positive. And he just kind of left it like that. So, and I think that says it all about this giant of a man, both physically and in terms of, you know, his legacy and what he leaves, the way he lived his life. He's a great human being and someone we should all strive to be a little bit more like in our day-to-day interactions with people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Presley, for what reason do you rise? Please, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I appreciate the indulgence of the body for two brief statements. This is the month of January, and as proclaimed by President Obama, this is National Slavery and Human Trafficking, National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. As I've often maintained, broken girls have an increased likelihood of growing up to be broken women. And I'll, as we are well aware, that the issue of trafficking is not one that just plagues us internationally, it plagues us domestically in the neighborhoods that we represent. And any issue that breaks at the bonds of community and erodes the fabric of us needs to continue to be a priority for this Commonwealth, our city, and this body. In November 2011, one of the proudest moments of my life, I still have the pen, was the bill signing where Governor Patrick signed anti-human trafficking legislation into law for the purposes of increasing the punishment for offenders and protection for victims. I want to thank each and every one of you because we did play a role in that legislation ultimately being passed and signed into law. I introduced a resolution in September of 2010 urging the legislature to sign this anti-human trafficking legislation. We were one of the last six states in the country to have anti-human trafficking legislation. I'd had been embroiled in this urban versus suburban conflict for some six years. But thanks to a broad and diverse coalition of advocates and law enforcement, the support of our governor, Attorney General Coakley, and DA Conley, we finally saw that legislation realized, and we're beginning to see the benefits of that yield in some way. But there's no doubt about it, this is an issue that does not discriminate. All young people, although disproportionately girls, are at and proven risk to be seduced and groomed into this life. And I just thought it important today that we acknowledge those who have had the support and been brave enough to get out of that life, and for those that are still in that life, know that we have not forgotten them and that we renew our commitment to continue to work with the human trafficking unit, the law enforcement, and advocates to better support victims, and most importantly, to reduce the demand. Because these girls and women would not be trafficked if there were not a demand. And that is a hard and uncomfortable conversation and dialogue as a community and a work that we have to continue to do. I want to thank Counsel Feeney, in advance of my joining this body, for her work on this front. I want to thank strong male allies and all of you, but in particular, Counselor Baker. And I am very encouraged that we have a mayor that has not only expressed a commitment to this issue, but will demonstrate that and do everything to ensure that we reduce the demand. Thank you. The second brief statement that I'll make, we recently celebrated 250 years of independence for the proud and brave country of Haiti. I wanted to remind everyone that January 12 was the day that that awful earthquake occurred. And officially, some, I did introduce a resolution that this be a day of remembrance, January 12, and that Massachusetts is the third-largest concentration of Haitians in the country. They primarily reside in Matapan and Hyde Park, in Rosendale, making great contributions to our city's culture, its workforce civically. And so I thought it important that we acknowledge on January 12, 300,000 lives were lost in that earthquake. The impact that reverberated not only physically but emotionally, and is still being felt. And I just wanted to take a moment to make sure that those loved ones who have been impacted know we have not forgotten them. We salute the beauty and the resilience of the country of Haiti and its people. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Yancey? For what purpose do you rise?
A very brief statement.
Brief it shall be. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I actually rise to thank Counselor Murphy for recognizing my friend Bob Quinn. There's nothing I could really add to what Counsel Murphy has said. Certainly, Bob Quinn is someone who has always been very supportive of me over the years. More important than that, Bob Quinn believed in education. So it's not a mistake that there's a building at University of Massachusetts named after him. It's also not a mistake that the Quinn Bill, that each of us know very much about, was initiated by Bob Quinn to encourage our police officers to advance in education as well. So I just wanted to publicly thank Counselor Murphy for recognizing Bob Quinn and ask that my name be added to the tribute in his name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. At this time, I'd like to ask all councils to rise so that we could adjourn. so that we could adjourn in memory of the following. For Counsel Baker, Patrick "Pat" Mannion. For Counsel Siomo, Mary F. Callahan. Effie Repolites. Frida Hussey. For Counsel Flaherty, Barbara Casper. Alberto Vasallo. For Counsel Lamatina, Danielle Campbell. Alfred DePerry. Cheryl Ferrera. Aura Garcia. Anita Girardi. Danielle Thomas Lynn. Carmen Opiti. Joseph Pelosi. And for Counsel Lamatina, Linnahan, and Flaherty, Carl Suter. For Counsel Linnahan, the Chair, Margaret Maggie Conley. Russell Sonny Lindfelter. For Counsel Murphy and all, Robert Quinn. John Linnahan O'Connell. And Harriet Voss. For Counsel Michelle Wu, Charles Williams. For Counsel Yancey, Frederick Benjamin. Thomas Berry. Ramona Yancey Frazier. Calvin Coolidge Hudson Jr. Reginald Williams. Dean Yarborough. And of course, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And for Counsel Murphy and Baker, and for all Consulors, as we said, the former Speaker of the House and Attorney General, Robert Quinn. So we bow our heads in silence for a moment. Thank you. Thank you. I see Counsel... Counsel Jackson? Okay. Thank you. So the Chair moves that when we adjourn, we do so in the memory of the aforementioned, and that we will meet again on Wednesday, January 29, at noon, 12 o'clock noon. This session is adjourned.